1:00 PM. And we will go ahead and open this with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments and approval of the agenda.
I've just got a couple of amendments here that I would like to add to the consent agenda. I, I'd like to add "I," which is an order eliminating certain positions subject to the fiscal year '25-'26 budget. And then, item J would be an order reorganizing certain programs. And then, I figured maybe we can put as a discussion item, just a quick discussion item regarding a Public Works Director position.
On where? For discussion?
Discussion items, item B, to add item B.
I was going to have the discussion around the new positions we have in the budget.
Okay, we'll just do that then.
Just, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
That'd still be in item B, Jay?
Yeah, I think it's gonna capture, I think, the what, the position that he is, the Public Works Director position. But we also have an investigator role and a CRO and some new positions that we are building job descriptions around. Okay.
Great, that's all, that's all I have.
Lynn, do you?
Good.
Okay. I, the only thing I was adding was that be the new positions discussion, so.
Yeah, yep.
Can I get a motion to approve this?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. I'll go ahead and call the question. Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Coker?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Okay. Next up is public comments. And we have Georgia Cockerham. Come on up.
Thank you.
Yep, you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Georgia Cockerham, Curry County citizen, Brookings. Accountability, a word used often by Commissioners Hollinger and Tros to impress upon the public how they take responsibility for their actions and that they rectify their mistakes. But do they? Or is their continuous claim of being accountable simply more deceptive rhetoric in an offensive effort to gain your trust? During the June 4 meeting, Commissioner Hollinger spoke about a letter written by the Executive Director of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. The letter suggested that Mr. Hollinger may have broken the law by recording a private meeting and then distributing that recording to the public. After reading the letter, Mr. Hollinger went on a rant blatantly accusing Sheriff Ward, who had not written the letter, of a deliberate effort to silence Mr. Hollinger through the twisting of state law and an abuse of power. He went on to say that this community deserves better than the fear-driven narrative peddled by our sheriff disguised as justice. Fear-driven narrative by our sheriff? He didn't write the letter. Was this a Freudian slip by Commissioner Hollinger revealing his desperate need to wield power over Sheriff Ward? Or was this a deliberate and false attack? Either way, if Commissioner Hollinger is to hold himself accountable, he owes a public apology to Sheriff Ward and the citizens of this county. During the April 14 BOC meeting, Commissioner Hollinger attacked a sheriff's office marine deputy by publicly accusing the deputy of having submitted fraudulent reports to the state marine board. That was another false statement and disgusting attack that could easily have resulted in a defamation of character lawsuit against the commissioner and Curry County. Why has Commissioner Hollinger not held himself accountable, rectified his error, and publicly apologized to the marine deputy and Curry County citizens? During the May 7 BOC meeting, Commissioner Hollinger, without a shred of evidence, accused a group of citizens working on a law enforcement levy of also initiating a recall effort against him. What do all of these false accusations have in common? They are all associated with Sheriff John Ward and/or the sheriff's office. Commissioner Hollinger has repeatedly used the term accountability when speaking of himself, but his actions have been quite the opposite given his accusations and his lack of the integrity required to apologize to those he's wrongly accused. In all three of the cases I've mentioned, neither of the other two commissioners have shown leadership by calling out Commissioner Hollinger on his frequent false accusations directed at another elected official and county citizens. This is dangerous for Curry County citizens. Commissioner Tros, at the June 12 budget meeting, you stated that you'd like to get back to collaborating with the sheriff. Who would want to collaborate with commissioners who lie, make false accusations against our citizens, or sit by quietly and let it go on?
Thank you. Commissioner comments?
Thank you very much for the courage that it takes to do that.
Well, you're welcome.
It's not a give and take.
Commissioner Coker, it's not a pleasure, I'm telling you, and it's, I believe, my duty as a citizen.
Thank you.
You have any comments?
No, no comments. I also don't believe I've said anything false or reported anything incorrectly. So, we'll let the entities at hand handle all that.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Do you want me to move to have it passed? May I do that?
Certainly.
Then I move that we pass the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll second. All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, I will call for the question. Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Coker?
Yes.
And I as well. Okay, discussion and action items. Discussion action item A, Rogue Valley Council of Governments Financial Services Intergovernmental Agreement. I'm gonna go ahead and get Director Fitzgerald on the phone. This is something that I've been working on as well, but there may be details that I miss.
Okay.
Hey, Director Fitzgerald. Commissioner Tros here. We're at discussion action item A, the Rogue Valley Council of Governments Financial Services. I will put you on speaker to discuss this, just a second. Okay. Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, so, I was telling the other Commissioners that this is a topic that I have a little bit of knowledge about as we were working together on this. But essentially, with the, with the, the state of our financial situation, right, we went out, we got, we got an accountant to get us through the fiscal year, that was Eric Itola. This is more of a long-term plan for our, for our finance services. And one of the things that has been a problem, I mean, I guess it's all about how you view it, but since the departure of Gary Short in, I wanna say it was 2016, 2017, we've just had a lot of revolving doors around finance, which makes things pretty difficult. And everybody always brings in a new system that fits the way they do things. Rogue Valley Council of Governments has been in, you know, has been a, has been around for a long time, serving several different municipalities. We went out, we tried to get three bids. This was the, this was the most considerable bid in terms of financially prudent and then, but also, they are, you know, they're about as local of a council of governments as we can find. You know, they're, they're based out of Jackson, Jackson-Josephine. So, as you can see, there's, you can see the rates that are posted there, very reasonable.
Yeah.
Their board has, has voted to accept us as a new member should we choose to move into an agreement. Director Fitzgerald, is that?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, that's accurate. We've, we've looked at, and we've worked with this model somewhat in the past through Lain Council of Governments. Rogue Council of Governments, I believe, is going to bring us more of what we're looking for particularly right now after querying a variety of different entities, but, but we're, what we're really looking for here is basically over, you know, third-party oversight of, of our finance operations as we go forward, just so that we make sure that we are doing things right and we make sure that we are not, I know that, I know that the word silo was used a lot during the, during the Budget Committee meetings. And I wanna make sure that, that Curry County doesn't itself act anymore as a silo than it has to. We, it's, it's, it's advantageous to reach out for expertise from, from outside of the community when that expertise is there. And, you know, we, we, we do lack some of that. We, I will say that we do have a new employee in our finance department. I have, our finance department is, is getting stronger, and I'm pretty comfortable with where it is right now, but I would like to have, I'd like to have professional oversight and, and the different specialties that, that exist within Rogue Council of Governments will be able to come in and, and help us on a variety of different levels. I think it's gonna be, I, it's gonna be a thing that we learn how much we need them as we go along, but I wanna, I wanna be sure that we, that we, that we really give it a, we give it a, a good chance because we, every time that we have reached out for help, we've, from outside entities, we've gotten it, we've learned a lot. And in this case, I think this, I think forming a, forming an alliance with, with the governments over there in the, in the, in the Rogue Valley, there, you know, that's pretty much, that's, that's part of where we are. They're our closest neighbors in a lot of ways. So, that's what I would recommend, and I, I think it's gonna work out well.
I'd agree. So, just kinda, we will still have accounts payable, we'll still be doing accounts receivable. They will be our oversight accountants, making sure, doing reconciliation for the books and providing, you know, the monthly statements, up-to-date accounting information as we go.
And, and a lot of that, a lot of that stuff, we, we generate ourselves. I just, I just wanna have expert guidance watching us as we go forward so that we can get our program up and running, up and running in a, in a, in a really healthy way that's, that is gonna be sustainable.
They're gonna provide us with, with monthly spreadsheets and stuff?
Yeah, most of, I mean, that, that data, that data we generate, we generate right now, Patrick, that data we, we generate, but they can, they can coordinate it and, and help us tailor exactly what, what we, what needs to go to the Commissioners and to each one of the departments. I'd like to have, but I, I really am looking forward to having more than, than quarterly balance sheets. I'd like to have monthly balance sheets, at least, and, you know, monthly books all updated out to every department so that every department is able to have a, have a finger on the pulse of where it is throughout the year.
That is, that is, that's the goal, that's the win.
Yep, perfect.
Yep, Director, you mentioned the agreement that we had with Lain, and I have to confess that I was pretty impressed with the work that they did, given the blow-up that we were going through as a result of the hacking and just the, if you will, the enormous backdrop within the county organizations where there just wasn't any kind of common protocol, software, and/or other tools that helped people get a view across departments relative to how much money was being held, how much money was being spent. And yet, by what we saw the people from Lain do, they not only picked us up as we were crippled, but they also went through and did a heck of a lot in terms of reconciling our books, first of all, creating many books out of shreds of paper. But, again, it was just great work. So, you say that as you look towards Rogue, you perceive that it's gonna be a step up. Do you have something that, in your mind's eye, that they'll bring that we didn't experience or we wished we would've had back during the year previous?
Well, the, the manpower at Lain changed a little bit over the last couple of years and the, and the skill sets that they, that they were bringing to the table and that they were able to make available to us after, I, I agree, they, they were an incredibly valuable asset for us, and I will always, well, I'm gonna always, always value the, the relationships that, that we made, just, you know, on the heels of the hack. It was incredible. I, I will never get over the way that people came from all over the state and all over the country to help us and, and selflessly and, and, and in many cases, no cost. I know Lain came in and, and, Lain Council of Governments came in bare bones and, and helped us, but I, what I'm looking for here is a little something different. This is more of the day-to-day management, and I, I believe, based on what, what I've seen of what Rogue, Rogue Council of Governments has, that those, those skill sets that they have are gonna lend themselves to oversight of, of what we're doing and building more effectively than, than Lain for now. I'm, I'm certainly not marking Lain off or any other government consortium like this because I, I do think that, I do think that this model is the way that, that local governments are going to be able to survive and work efficiently at, at all levels. I think it's, I think not just, not just on the business side. I think, I think you're gonna see alliances between counties on, on lots of the services that, counties and municipalities on lots of the services that, that are provided, including, you know, it could be, it could be even assessment, could be, could be building planning, could also be law enforcement. All of those things are, are areas that can be run more efficiently when, when people coordinate their assets and, and skill sets.
Thank you.
The, I will, in terms of the, the difference in services, I think there's not gonna be probably, obviously, we're in a different place, right, financially than we were then. It was, there was a lot of missing pieces when they came in and stepped in, so I think they had a very triage approach where this is more of a maintenance approach. But I think the services are probably very similar in terms of what they provide for the communities and to the municipalities. I think that one of the things, though, when we reached out for bid was that, I believe at this time, ElCog was not taking on new clients in the financial services because of staffing, as he mentioned before. So, I think that was a part of a reason why Lain, we were not essentially considering them at this time. We had them as a bid, as a no bid, but that was part of the, the deal there.
And then, the second thought that I had relative to the review of the, the contract. There wasn't, I didn't see any contemplation of any renewal clause. Was there any consideration given amongst the parties regarding the circumstances where it might be valuable to have something like that in there that they can salute and/or decline at the appropriate time?
Well, I, I kinda wanted to hold off on that, and as, as did, we wanted to see how we fit, and, and as this thing grows together, I think that's, that'll be a natural, a natural next step. But I, I didn't wanna get either party overcommitted. I wanna make sure that this is the way that, that I hope it's going to.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, I can, any more discussion on it or anything like that?
Nope.
I'll make a motion then.
Okay, second.
Well.
Go ahead and finish your motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed intergovernmental agreement contract between Curry County and the Rogue Valley Council of Governments as stated.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Coker?
I.
And I as well.
Thank you, Ted, very much.
Yeah, that's a big move for us.
Ted, I'm just gonna have you stay on here.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have a discussion action item B, which is, is new positions. And so, I wanted to just start this off with the fact that we have several new positions to the county, one being a Public Works Director, one being, being an investigator in the DA's office, another being Community Resource Officer in the Sheriff's Office, and another being an Animal Control/Civil Processor. And so, I just wanted to, to touch on those. So, as we, as we, as we are finalizing the job descriptions for those positions, I wanted to have a discussion with this group to see if we, if there was consensus to allow HR to begin the recruitment process for this with some baseline job description pieces and, and then with the anticipation that at our next meeting, we would have those job descriptions ready for approval. But essentially, this would speed things up by, you know, two to three weeks potentially and, and so, so that we could potentially have people in these roles by mid-August as opposed to mid-September. Thoughts?
I, I support it greatly. I think it's precisely what we've said we were going to do, and we might as well start doing it now. It takes a long time to recruit these kinds of professionals onboard, and the sooner we start it, the better off the community's gonna be.
Agreed.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's, let's get the ball rolling and let's, let's find some people.
And I would, I would encourage the Sheriff's Office to do the same because they've got some hiring that's unfolding. It's not necessarily new slots, but it's filling things like in the jail and such. And just encourage everybody to put the pedal to the metal so that we can roar right on in to 2026, or 25-26.
I was informed that there were interviews for two corrections deputies this week.
That's super.
Which is great. Obviously, you noted on our consent calendar that we had a higher order for the, for the finance person in our finance department, and then that, and then we had a transfer from juvenile to corrections, so, you know, those are, those are all good things. So, Director Fitzgerald, do you see any legal snafus or, you know, things that could prohibit us from starting the recruitment process on these new budget-approved positions?
I don't. I think we can, I think we can do that. We'll just have to keep it a little bit, I mean, a little bit vague while we, while, you know, while we finalize the job descriptions, so.
Sure.
I think, I didn't get that. I, I agree that the quicker we get it out there, the quicker we'll get, we'll get these spots filled, or, I mean, it's, some of them might be a challenge, and who knows? Some of them might, might, there might be people closer to home that, that fill that need.
Yeah. Well, I, I have had a few people reach out and ask, they, they watched the budget meetings, and, and they did, they, they saw these new positions come up and they, they had interest and.
Yeah.
And, and so, I think, I think there is a little bit of buzz in the community about some of these new positions and people who may be qualified to, to apply, so, well, that's great. If there's any, if there's nothing further, then we just move with that consensus.
Yep, I'm good with that.
And Director Fitzgerald will work with HR to start the recruitment process on some of those, on those roles.
Okay, I'm advertised.
Beautiful. Okay, next up.
Thank you, Jay.
Public safety update. I do not see the sheriff here tonight. This is a little disappointing. I was hoping that we were gonna have the sheriff attending and, and participating after the discussions that we had in our budget meetings. We will continue to press on. Maybe there's more pressing issues that he's tending to at this time, so we will wait to find out and, and go from there. Director of County Operations update.
Fairly sure tonight, the only thing I just wanted to point out to everybody that, that having just gotten through the budget process, we will be moving on as we discuss with supplemental budgets for the various departments as, as necessary. Some of those are gonna take a little bit of notice depending on the amount of, amount of, you know, if we're, if we're doing things that, that exceed 10% of that, of that department's budget, that's gonna, that's gonna require some notice. Some of, some of the smaller ones won't. We're gonna proceed on all of those as quickly as possible, and we're, and we've retained the services of Eric, the CPA who helped us through the budget process itself. He's agreed to, to work with us through this process, and we really appreciate that. And I don't see any of the momentum stopping, so I think we're, I think, I think we'll just be able to move right through here and get this wrapped up, you know, over the next month or two is my, is my goal.
Any questions for Director of Operations?
We had, we talked a couple of times about getting on the calendar soon, another DCO, or DOC, what is it?
DCO.
DCO, yeah. Can we, can we go ahead and air that and agree amongst the four of us and anybody else that needs to be there, how to get that on the calendar and move forward?
I think we're, we're just in a, in a little tough time, time spot here with the fourth and everything coming up. I would, if there's a time, I, I believe that, I believe that Patrick and I are gonna be tied up next Wednesday and probably Thursday, so if there's a way we could work it in prior to that next week, that would be good. I don't know if that works for everybody else.
Well, what day of the week works for everybody? Let's start there. I think, and we had it on Thursdays, that's what we were shooting for. I know that we have kind of the room reserved, I think, for Thursdays at 1:00. But is there a better time and day that we can set that? And obviously, you know, there's gonna be times when one of us aren't gonna be able to make it there, and, but continued, continued dialogue and discussion is always gonna be pretty vital going into this fiscal year, for sure, so.
I'd recommend, I mean, I'm still, I'm still good with keeping it at Thursdays, but I was actually just maybe hoping we can, we can bump it up earlier in the day, maybe like a 10 or 11 o'clock.
Sure.
Or 2:00 or 1:00 or whatever it's been.
I mean, if you'd like, yes, yeah, we have department-led meetings at 11 on Thursdays.
Okay.
But, you know, we already have meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays, oh, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, right? So, maybe it makes sense to have the DCO. So maybe it makes sense to have the DCO, the BOC DCO meeting, like, earlier on, in the day on Wednesday, right? Prior to the BOC meeting, um, it'll give anybody an opportunity to discuss, you know, some things on the agenda if you have, you know, discussions with the, the Director of, of, uh, of County Operations. We can also have discussion, uh, I mean, we can obviously have those discussions on Thursday too about upcoming agenda items and, and things of that nature, but, um, yeah.
I understand.
If that, if that's.
Would that be weekly then?
We should, uh, yeah, I think we should, we should try to prioritize a weekly meeting, you know, um, that, uh, that we can all kinda, you know, plan around, schedule, and, and count on. And like I said, there are always gonna be circumstances where one of us isn't gonna be able to make it. But, uh, and if, and if, and if there's situations where, where more than one of us can't, can't make it, and it just, it doesn't make sense, then, then, then we can always cancel.
Well, I, I, I'm very much in support of the frequency of the meetings being weekly, and a, as long as it's estimated to be a convenient time for the bulk of the team, then absolutely, whatever, Wednesday or Thursday. Once, once I know where to put a stake in the ground, I can organize around it.
Well, we can, we could, I mean, we, we can shoot to have them Wednesdays at, uh, like 11 o'clock.
Let's try it out. Let's do it.
And that way, it's on meeting day already, so generally, most of us have our schedules kinda planned.
If it's on, um, if it's on meeting day, then we wanna do Brookings still, or that one particular week, we just have it here. Meeting day, have it here in Gold Beach. Other, other non-meeting days, we just, we can be down at Brookings, or whatever.
Yeah, we can, um, we, let's coordinate, the, let's coordinate the, the, the place with, um, you know, with, with, with Natasha and, and Director Fitzgerald. And then, um, but I'm open to that as well, so.
Perfect.
I'm open to it, being here. It, you know, I, I do like that, that we have a couple of meetings down there, um, that are kinda, uh, accessible, so, but nonetheless, I, I hear your point about making it consistent, and, um, you know, consistent is the key word.
We've got a, we have a robust series of items that we need to handle as a result of this budgeting process that we've got, we just completed. And to be able to launch sooner rather than later, just as we're doing with the recruiting, I think is really important, and I would, I'd follow your lead in that.
Okay. Okay, Director Fitzgerald, we'll, uh, we're, we're gonna shoot for Wednesdays at 11, and we will work on kinda how we formulate the, the place on that as we, as we get out notices.
Okay.
You know, the thing is, is the reality is, is the, the EOC in Brookings may not be available on Wednesday's 11.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Hold on, already next Wednesday Ted and I will not be around.
Yeah.
So, but we can always, that's not a big deal.
And there's a good chance I won't be either, and so just to, I'll go over my.
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking next week, we might want to try for a Tuesday. If, you know, Monday or Tuesday, if we could do that, just so we can, so we can, uh, you know, I, I know that Lynn wants to meet, and I, I think it is constructive to meet on these issues, so.
I'm, I'm available Tuesday.
We can, we can work on that. Why don't we, why don't we ask Natasha to see if she can schedule something around everybody's schedule early in the week, next week?
Okay.
Works for me. Thank you.
All right, and, um, all right, uh, Commissioner Updates, Commissioner Coker.
Trying to get, uh, a good sense after the condition of our high-risk bridges here in the county, and spent a couple of days now walking the areas. The, uh, our road department guys have been terrific, and guys and gals have been terrific in terms of getting me the baseline information and such, guiding the areas that I go to. I think, I think we will, within probably the next four to six weeks, have an opportunity to come back and make a proposal to the Board of Commissioners and the community at large relative to some immediate, uh, heavy lifting regarding the elimination of some significant deferred maintenance issues that we've got on some of our very important bridges. The other thing.
Can I talk about bridges with you just for a second?
Yeah.
Learned a little bit of information, uh, last week up at County College in regards to, to bridges. Any bridge over 20 feet is registered with the Oregon State, under the Oregon State Roads Bridges Act, I think it is. And we would, uh, we can call and request any time for the, for that entity to come down and do bridge assessments for us and essentially get us on some sort of list or a timeframe list for funding and repair, because a lot of that funding does come from the state, being that those would be state-registered bridges, anything over 20 feet. If it's under 20 feet, falls on us, on the county. So, I've got a packet of information with some of that in, um, from County College last week that I can, I can share with you.
That'd be terrific. And then, uh, Director Fitzgerald, we, on that matter of the specifications between what can fall on the shoulders of the state versus what comes out of the pocket of the county, it'd be great if we could cycle back with our road department and understand how they have, uh, taken advantage of that, that particular division of labor and division of funding. There may be a roadmap that we've used before in terms of, uh, successfully working with the state in this regard. And if that's the case, it'd be wonderful not to have to reinvent the wheel. If we could take advantage of the common memory and the previous good work that's been done, that'd be wonderful.
I think, I think also going, going back to that too, the state provides funding for that, but it's, but it's matching for the county up to a certain percent. And I want to say the couple of the numbers that we're throwing around are like an either 6 or 10% match from the county on, uh, bridge repairs and upgrades.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That was like a good deal, just the shopper that I am.
We've worked, we've worked on, on several bridges where we have, we have a couple in process right now. I'll be happy to go over those with you. But we have a lot more, we have some way restricted bridges that are pretty integral to, um, the forestry industry here in Curry County, which is of course the major industry, and, and those are impacting what can get in and out of the mountains and what can get harvested, so. Things that's, those are high priorities for us. We also have some others that, that we, um, kind of inherited. I want to say the, the Pistol River Bridge to the, um, to the south on Carpenterville Road, I believe, even though that is an ODOT road, that bridge is the county's responsibility, and I'm not quite sure how that happened, but that's, it's, it's, it's an expensive bridge and it needs maintenance.
Is that that, the, the longer bridge there on, on Carpenterville Road?
It's, it's not on, it's the bridge, if you take, if you're coming north toward Gold Beach, and you take the, the first exit, you take the most southerly exit to Pistol River, you will cross the Pistol River on, on the bridge I'm just, I'm describing.
Yes. Okay.
And that's, it's a fairly major bridge.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is. Okay.
Okay, um, anything else?
There was, but it slipped my mind. I was so intrigued by Ted's comments on a bridge. It just, like a magnet sucked all my brains out.
We can come back to it and finish.
Okay.
Commissioner Hollinger.
Yeah, um, well, I already kinda talked a little bit about the County College stuff, so last week was my last County College session up in Salem. We talked a lot about, uh, roads, road departments, surveyors, transportation, and it's actually kind of a fitting time to be up there, uh, Friday night, not Friday night, but Friday afternoon. We ended session early. The AOC Association of Counties Transportation lobbyist was at the Capitol, because the governor, as, as well as the Democratic Party, was trying to essentially ram through the, the $2 billion a year transportation bill through the last day of legislature. And, um, so all of the commissioners and everybody in class.
11 billion.
I'm sorry, 11 billion, went to the, uh, Capitol to, uh, testify, uh, in front of the, uh, Transportation Committee. There were, if I'm not mistaken, 129 testimonies, all opposed. So anyway, so when we all showed up into the hearing room, all of us commissioners, I think they're all from 20 to 30 different counties. Everybody got up from the dais and walked out the door and did a little stall tactic, which was kinda interesting to see. They didn't want to hear from us. They, they knew that there was going to be a lot of opposition to what they wanted to do, so they went in a hid for about two and a half hours, and wanted to kinda wait everybody out, get a lot of people just to leave. So there were, uh, many commissioners that, that stayed and presented their testimonies, and, um, a handful of them actually stayed until 11 o'clock at night, until the bill was finally killed on the House floor. So I, I want to say that, um, our presence there that afternoon played a huge part in, uh, that bill, that bill failing at the end of the day, so that was a, a good win for Oregon and all of the taxpayer payers.
That's a great page to rewrite and put in our playbook as an association of county governments. That when we do have jeopardy, as represented by some major unpleasant move the state's trying to make on us, that we get 30 or 40.
Yeah.
Show up.
It, it sent, it sent some shockwaves through the Capitol, and, and the House leaders and Senate leaders all knew we were all there and kinda put them on their heels. So it was a successful, uh, trip up there all the way around, um, so I was very pleased about that. Um, I do have one other item here. It's a, a notice to boaters in the Gold Beach area on the Rogue River. Please be advised that there will be training on the Rogue River. Uh, the training will include all of the marine deputies, as well as, um, not just marine deputies, but, uh, fire, uh, department, uh, patrol, I guess you could say, uh, and rescue boats, fire patrol rescue boats, um, will be out as well. They do this annual training on the Rogue River. It's gonna be Sunday, July 13th through Friday, July 18th. And, uh, the river will be very busy, so, um, just please be cautious and, um, you know, let's, let's try not to get in the way of the important training that will be taking place that week.
Okay.
I, I, I would sign off by saying thank you to the many people that brought together the 2526 budget. That would apply to all of our electeds, all our department heads, certainly Jay, your role, Pat's role, uh, leading the charge many times. And then, of course, our Director of Operations, uh, making that happen. It was my first opportunity to look from the inside out, and it was an impressive demonstration of talent, united, uh, in order to get something very important done on behalf of our community. So I thank you, each of you, all of them.
Thank you.
I just wanna, I wanna comment on that. I just wanna say that, that our treasurer, Nick Vasino, really stepped up and was, uh, was, uh, indispensable in that, in that effort, as well as, as Rabia Lee, my assistant. And, uh, I'm very proud of, to be associated with both of them, and, and, and they worked, they worked diligently with Eric, our CPA, and Eric also made himself available and, and, uh, stepped up. It worked out really well, and we're just gonna keep that momentum going, like I said earlier, and, and, uh, and I think, I think that, pre, having that skillset sort of embedded within county staff now at a level that I don't believe is, has been there for many years, is, is gonna be a big step toward the, the, kinda just like, to, the, the county running at a more steadily in the long term.
Don't forget Julie.
I will never forget Julie. Julie is there, like stalwart soldier. She did a great job too.
She did, yeah. Yeah, and, uh, you know, Eric and, it was, it was, it was pretty great, great effort. Um, anything else?
Do we want to talk about possibly moving our next meeting?
Yeah, I was gonna actually bring that up.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and just, I'll launch into that real quick. Um, so our next meeting is, is, is set for the 15th. Um, I was asking if we could move that to the following week of the 22nd. I, uh, may, well, you know, my, my timing right now is, is, is a little, uh, my schedule's a little crazy. But one of the things that I'd like to be able to do, um, in the, in the coming weeks is, uh, prepare the, a State of the County, uh, address, uh, going into this new fiscal year. And so, is, is anyone opposed to moving it to the 22nd as opposed to the 15th?
No.
No.
Not at all? It also gives an additional week to get some of those job descriptions prepared. And get them on the, the agenda, so.
For the July 15th, is that when you're proposing to do the address, or would that be at a different date?
TBD.
Okay.
Yeah, TBD, so, um.
So I understood that we were moving the 15th to the 22nd.
Correct.
Okay.
Our general business meeting.
Correct. So, Pa, I didn't catch the nuance of, of Pat's question. So we may or may not do the, uh, State of the County on the 22nd?
Well, we were talking about doing the State of the County as an independent.
Oh, gotcha.
Instead of a part of a, part of a regular business meeting.
I just, I don't think we, it would be nice for it to not get lost in all of the other agenda items on a business meeting.
I'm totally on board with that.
Yeah, so, I'll work with, um, I'll work with, with Director Fitzgerald and, on a date to move that forward. You already got everybody, thank, on the budget. I do want to note one thing, so the ripple effects. The ripple effects are coming through, uh, so yes, uh, the, the legislation was blocked on that $11 billion transportation package. Now, some of the ripple effects are coming through on that, that potentially could, um, have great impacts on us and cities. So currently, um, transportation dollars are divided up in the 50, 30, 20 rule.
Yep.
50% of the DMV registrations and, um, things of that nature, uh, which pay for, uh, the transportation departments for the most part. 50% goes to ODOT, uh, 30% go to counties, and 20% go to cities. I was informed that there is discussion that the, uh, governor is talking about withholding the dollars that come to the counties and the cities to make ODOT whole. I don't know the, in the tune of how much, um, but I know a, any amount will be absolutely, um, you know, will be, will be, will be big for us. Currently, for those who don't know, um, our road department is not funded with general fund dollars. Our road department is funded with, um, with license registration dollars coming from the state. And, um, that, uh, it, having a reduction in those will, um, uh, will impact us. Meaning we'll be making a decision whether we're using those reserves to continue production at current levels, if we're reducing production, or a combination of, of, of both, but. And, and, and this is all current speculation that's just being discussed in, in the Capitol. And, and, and this is all current speculation that's just being discussed in, in the Capitol, that, that, the, the, the governor, the governor is considering this. And so just want to make you all aware.
To be responsible with our road money.
Of course it is.
Certainly.
And it's no surprise. I mean, what's, what's happening at the local level happens in Salem. We're not the only county. We're one of many rural counties that have been squeezed the last couple of years with constrained funding and rising costs. And now that we see the impact of that at the state level, we should anticipate that they're going to go through the same knot hole, the same wringer that we've had to go through. And it's going to mean an awful lot of work and maybe even some acrimony where the state has to arm wrestle and reprioritize whether they're going to be spending money on programs that don't drive the well-being of the most. And, uh, they have to reconsider giving to the few, uh, to give to the most because the most are paying for all that. And the most have said, we're not going to pay you more simply because you ask for it. You're going to have to demonstrate a level of trust that you know how to spend it. They've asked us to do that. And you're going to have to prove that there's output that really warrants us to pay more, right? And I think that's a real stretch for the state of Oregon to prove.
Yeah. Yeah. Not many entities want to show their work.
No, they don't.
No. That leads me to the next discussion, which is around, um, so I, I, I attended our quarterly meeting, uh, for the A and C, the, the O and C, um, committee. And, um, there are some major, major developments occurring, um, that are potentially, could be pretty devastating to us. So in, uh, President Trump's current bill, um, being proposed, in there is the, an increase in timber production of twenty-five percent. However, the, the BLM is grossly under the expected amount per their plan. Um, so it's expected for them to harvest two hundred and five million board feet per year. Keep in mind, sustainable yield for the O and C lands by their own designation and their own calculation is 1.2 billion board feet, which is what's supposed to be harvested. But with their current Northwest Forest Plan, it is supposed to be a two hundred and five million board feet. They have reached that number one time since the plan was implemented in the last eight years. Last year, uh, they harvested a hundred and forty million board feet. So it's a twenty-five percent increase, but a twenty-five percent increase from what? Twenty-five percent from, increasing from zero is still zero, right? So, um, there's some major considerations there. I know that our, the lobbyists are working to actually get a number, not a percentage, um, to be identified, so that there's some accountability behind it.
Or at least a process for getting a number.
Yes. But here's the other piece of this that could be really hurtful. Um, that they are working really diligently to get this removed, but in the, the bill in its current form, it states that all receipts related to timber harvest will be deposited directly into the federal treasury.
Yeah.
Which means we would not be getting our portion of the O and C dollars, uh, in the bill in its current form. So there's, there's obviously a big push to get that rectified, um, before the bill is potentially, uh, approved in the, in the House. I know it's been through the Senate, but, um, that is, that, that those, that, you know, you, you, you take a place like us, uh, where, where we get, um, you know, just over a, a million dollars, you know, in, in, currently in timber receipts. And that's one thing. But you take a place like Douglas County who gets, you know, almost twenty-some million in timber receipts. And, uh, and that's an, an entirely different conversation. So, um, it would hurt all of, all of the O and C counties, uh, definitely some of us down, down here in Southern Oregon more than others, coups included. And so, um, anyways, there's speculation that they will just pull all of that portion of timber out of the bill as opposed to trying to get things piecemealed and corrected. And then what that would do is allow us to, uh, work directly with the new, uh, who hasn't been appointed yet. Um, but the new director of the BLM and director of, uh, Secretary of Ag and Secretary, uh, and Secretary of Interior, um, and the director of BLM to move these things along at the, uh, at that level. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. There's a, there's, it's a mad scramble and it's frantic and, um, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of anxiety, uh, going into, uh, the approval of that, uh, legislation. And on a good note, uh, I just wanted to, so just, uh, my calendar, I, I will be leaving tomorrow. Our girls' major softball, uh, it, it's a, it's a team comprised of Gold Beach, uh, youth and Brookings youth. Are going to the state finals for, for Little League. They, they beat, they won their district. And so, um, I will be headed up with them, uh, for the state playoffs tomorrow. And, uh, starting on, starts on Saturday in Hermiston.
Congratulations.
Indeed, congratulations and.
Big victory this, this last weekend.
Yeah, so that was neat. So different group of girls, but so, many of them are similar. Many of them are on both teams. But, um, the girls went to a travel ball tournament this weekend and, um, from my understanding, well, we had two teams there. We had a sixteen U team and we had a twelve U team. The sixteen U team won the silver or bronze bracket and our twelve U team won the gold bracket, which from my understanding is the first time a group, um, a travel ball group from our area has won a, uh, has won a gold bracket. So really, really, really proud of those, those kids and, uh, and they, 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 they've been working hard. And that probably the most impressive thing was is it was the first time they'd play together in a tournament. Uh, and so to come out and play some of the top teams in the state, you know, Salem's, Salem's, you know, number one team and some of these other teams was pretty, was pretty neat. So.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, it was good. Um, all right, with that, if there's any other comments?
Happy Fourth of July.
I can hardly think of a better place to spend the weekend than Hermiston.
Yes, it will only be a hundred and five. Uh, yes, yes, looking forward to that. Um, well, yes, if there's nothing other, happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Happy Fourth of July.
Be safe.
And, uh, we will adjourn the meeting at six fifty-eight on July second.
Thank you.
Thank you all.